And we will move along as quickly as we can. There may be some at the end of the alphabet that we may go to tomorrow night or another time, but we'll think terms maybe going to about nine o'clock. So, Mr. Information Technology, I will introduce you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Mark Biswell.
Mark Biswell, IT Director. As you can see with information technology, our proposed 2018 budget's about 4.27 million. That's about a .4% increase. Our FTEs are staying flat at 17. Our contractual's about 49%, and our wages and benefits are about 39. It's not a lot of wiggle room in the IT budget. Key performance indicators, the performance measures for IT telecom and IT network working are based on system uptime. We're striving for 100% uptime of our IT telephone and data networking systems in 2018, and that will be a new benchmark. Councilmember Jensen and I had a discussion about that at the break. But caveat, this measure does not include planned scheduled maintenance, so. Going out on a limb here. Performance measures for IT services provided to our customers are based on customer help desk surveys. These surveys are presented to our customers by email when a service desk ticket is resolved and closed. We're striving for a 95% satisfaction rating in 2018. We're currently at about 94. Other IT performance goals for 2018 are data sets released on the city open data portal and major applications moved to the cloud. We're planning to publish 100 data sets to the open data portal and to move five major applications to the cloud in 2018. As far as department highlights go, the IT department is in the process of testing a new telephone system. The telephone system under test will be cloud-based and will replace our current on-premise telephone system. Testing to date has been performed within the IT department. We were the first to go, and results have been good. So, we plan to upgrade the telephones and contracts and procurement next, and based on user input and satisfaction, we plan to start deploying the new telephone system across the city. The IT department also plans to upgrade all computers in the city to Microsoft Windows 10. Challenged there is we have to wait for certain software vendors to certify on 2010 before we can move forward. So, the IT department is also in the process of specing out a single payment portal for the city. The vision is to create a web-based, one-stop shop for our constituents to make online payments for city services. We're initially targeting about 24 potential online payment types. The IT department is working with utility staff to spec out a new utility billing, customer information, and meter management system that is based on current technology. The project will begin this year and will be finalized in 2018. That concludes my presentation, and I'll stand for questions.
Hey, questions? Councilman Jensen.
Thank you.
Good luck on the 100%.
I think that's a very admirable goal, but if anybody in the world can do it, it's you.
Thank you, sir.
A quick question on the payments portal. Will that have the ability to store payment data so my water bill can just be billed to my credit card if it's within an acceptable limit that I set?
I would have to defer to my expert. I can't answer, though. We do not store any credit card information on premise, so that helps for PCI.
Currently, yeah. It's a real problem for some people.
The new payment portal will allow for repeat transactions, so you can actually schedule that. Of course, we have some concerns about encryptions and the storage of the credit card information, but it will allow you to schedule your own particular date, a particular period, when you want to actually have your amount deducted.
So, this payments portal would not be a cloud service?
No, it is going to be on-premise.
Ah, yeah. PCI compliance for that's kind of a pain in the butt. So, is there a particular reason a cloud service isn't applicable to this?
Well, generally, the way it works is the application's onsite, but the payment processor's hosted in the cloud. They take on the liability.
Yeah, exactly.
So, between us and them, it's encrypted, and all that credit card information and the customer information resides in the cloud, so they take the liability.
Yeah, because PCI compliance management for that is just, it's a killer.
Deputy Mayor Cohen.
Thank you. I had some questions, just general IT questions. When we got our statement for the council IT fees, it increased drastically, and I asked for kind of an accounting of what it is that we're paying for, and we had laptops that were checked out and broken air cards that we're still paying fees for and things like that. And once we got those, and I think there were nine voicemail boxes we were paying for of council members that are no longer here, how often do we go back through and just kind of re-inventory the actual needs? I mean, we had three computers in an office of one staff person. It seems kind of overkill that, you know, how often do we go back through and just do like a re-accounting of, you know, the certain needs that an office needs? Because I think we were paying for services that we simply weren't using anymore.
Well, we basically let up the department to determine what services they want to have in terms of IT, how many desktop computers, how many telephones. That's really left up to the departments. As far as air cards go, that's a wireless communication, that falls under the wireless communication device policy through the finance department, so I'm not sure about what you have in terms of wireless communication devices. I do know what you have in terms of PCs. We were able to fix that. And as far as the voicemail boxes go, I just didn't realize they'd been dropped. But we do a full inventory every year.
Okay.
Yep.
Other questions? Councilman Ortiz.
Well, that brings up a good question, then. Do we all have voicemail boxes?
My understanding is those have been dropped. They were dropped a couple of years ago.
Oh, because I never knew that. I always thought it was our, you know, our personal in our home.
I didn't know it either.
Wow.
So, I'm not sure why, I don't, I'm not sure who mandated that and why it was done, but it's a surprise to me.
I mean, because we've never had a phone. Good lord. Okay, I just want to say, Deputy Mayor Cohen, I asked that one of the computers be in the back room. That's when we had Kia, and then we had where Angela sits. So, I know sometimes Richard, if he's downtown or if I'm downtown, I don't, to come in and look at it, I don't feel comfortable coming in on Angela's desk or Kia's desk to look up something if I want to check my email or if I want to print something off. I just don't feel comfortable because that's theirs, and if they're working on it, then we got to tell them to get up or blah, blah, blah. And so, I know I did ask for that. I didn't think that was costing us anything, though.
Computers are part of IT fees, the IT fee calculation.
But I was always told that was, it was an older computer, and it's an older printer, and I was always told that wasn't costing us anything.
No, we have to count for every computer in the city because of a Microsoft agreement. Every computer we have falls under the licensing agreement of Microsoft, so it doesn't matter if it's a really old computer, a brand-new computer. We still have this, we still have the same licensing requirements.
I mean, okay, and that's just something I think we need to look at. I mean, we don't have an office. We don't have anything. We have a conference room that we can bring people to. If I don't feel comfortable meeting them out or meeting them at my home, then I ask them to come to the council office to meet me, to hear what their concern is, somewhere where I feel safe during hours. So, that's just kind of important to me, especially if they need me to look something up or whatever. I don't know what the cost is, but it's, that's one of the reasons why it's always been there, that I've always asked that it be available. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Claire.
Under your licenses, there's like an $85,000 increase under service licensing. Is that for like Windows 10? Is that your software licensing?
No, that's licenses we're anticipating for cybersecurity.
So, why, it went up 85,000?
We've increased it. It was, yes, it went up 85.
They went up or we use it more?
No, that's what we're projecting in terms of expenditures in 2018.
For the use of?
Yes. Cybersecurity tools.
Because we're adding additional or the fee went up?
We have, we have increased that line item, taking it from other parts of the budget, so the fee's not actually gone up, so.
What?
She wanted to know if the, if we were buying new software or if the fee for the software we had has gone up.
Potentially buying new software. I apologize.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Councilwoman Hiller.
In terms of the highlights that you shared with us today, are those, obviously, you made it clear that we're upgrading the technology that we would be using in these. Are the systems less expensive, the same or more expensive to do that?
Well, I dislike saying it depends, but it depends on what the system is. Obviously, depending on the market, more, some technology are a higher, hotter item today than others, so it just varies. Right now, any type of IT security product is off the chart, as Councilmember Jensen can attest to. Things like network switches and basic networking gear have gone down, so it really varies.
But I mean, like changing the phone system out, is that necessary?
Well, our phone system is about 17 years old. It's still a great system, but we're running into difficulties finding people to maintain it, so we definitely need to move based on the age and just the ability to support the system.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilman Everson.
Just real quick, regarding the telephone, it's not clear from this, but it's going to be a voice-over IP. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's a second-generation voice-over IP. It's a SIP-based system, so it's totally hosted in the cloud.
Okay, and we'll be able to maintain that ourselves, then, correct?
Correct.
Thanks.
Very good. Thank you. Other questions? Seeing none. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we'll proceed to our legal department with Lisa Robertson, the city attorney, giving the overview.
Thank you, governing body. You'll see on the first slide that in the 2017 adopted and 2018 proposed budget, we are still at 15 FTEs. That encompasses four employees that are in the general government division, four that are in the civil litigation division, and seven that are in the criminal prosecution divisions, and each of those divisions are funded by two separate funds, the general fund and the special liability fund. And our key performance measures, first off, the property maintenance code violation cases, that's a priority that's been established by the city council. There were 300 cases that were filed in 2015, and that was bumped up quite a bit in 2016 to 451. We're hoping to maintain that number for this year, and we've plugged in a conservative number for 2018, but there's room for improvement. We'll, we'll try to file more cases if that's possible, given the staffing levels. The contracts that we prepare and review are pretty much the same, so you'll see consistent numbers throughout. We also have claims made and filed against the city. They're typically pretty consistent. It's potholes, sewer main breaks, and sewer backups that make up the majority of those claims. And then the amount, the corresponding amount that is claimed for those are very high, as you'll see reflected, there were 15 million in 2015, 11 million, and projected 340. But if you go down to the next line, which is the amount actually paid for those claims, those figures are much lower, so we have a lot of success in paying out a much lesser amount than what people have originally asked for in conjunction with the claims made. Some of our department highlights for the general government division, I've talked about this a little bit before, what we want to try to do and what we've started doing is looking through all of the codes that may be a little bit outdated, might need some work, just to not reference departments that are no longer, no longer with the city or that are named a different way. We've already gone through several policies in conjunction with other departments, such as the technology services policy. Civil litigation, what they're going to work on is to continue with developing processes for collecting data associated with the claims that are made. And part of the reason for doing that is to develop ways to perhaps identify target areas, places where maybe more claims are being submitted throughout the city than others, and then working with those departments or divisions to try to figure out what's going on, how can we make this better and reduce the number of claims that are generated. And then the criminal prosecution division, we're going to continue prioritizing on the property maintenance code violations, but our goal will always be voluntary compliance to the extent possible, so to the extent we can help neighborhood relations with that, and we'll continue to do so.
Questions? Councilwoman Claire.
Yes, sir. Couple things. When you said the property code violation cases filed with the, that's how many projected with the amount of staff now, is, does that mean, is there always a backlog? Is there a backlog? Are we keeping up?
The goal, Councilmember Claire, is to always keep up, for sure. If we discover that there's been an issue with that, we're going to devote more manpower to it.
Okay.
So, we'll just devote legal specialists that may not normally do that to, to work with the prosecutor to catch up to where we need, where we need to be.
Thank you. And then purchase services, the 444,000, what, what services do we purchase?
Are you on page 67, Councilmember Claire?
Yes, I am.
Okay. That reflects a claim that was successfully made. It's litigation where we settled, actually didn't settle. It was an amount that we need to pay out, and it's, it's paid out this year, but it will be reflected in the 2018 budget.
Okay.
A very large litigation claim.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Councilman Jensen.
Just very quickly, do you have an idea what your capacity is in terms of property maintenance code violations?
Pardon me, I'm sorry.
What your capacity would be like, what is the maximum number of cases your department would be able to handle in a single year?
Councilmember, I don't know, to be honest with you, but we're going to try to push the limit as much as we can with the personnel that we have right now. I don't know that I can answer that for you.
Okay. I just know we have, there's a number of bottlenecks in that process, and I'm trying to ferret out which one it is, and if indeed there needs to be a capacity change in some of these departments to handle, we have a massive backlog of cases in the wild that have necessarily worked through our process yet, so.
Correct.
Excellent. Well, I appreciate your willingness to shift resources around to cover that as necessary. I think that's admirable.
Thank you.
Other questions? Councilwoman Hiller.
Since we're on that line, and I won't belabor it, but city manager was correct that a lot of these are just activity goals rather than performance outcomes goals. And I would hope that in the case of code compliance, that the goal would be that the number, if we're doing an effective job with our write-ups and with our work on the front end, that those numbers would in fact go down, that the measure of voluntary compliance somehow between the two departments would be our goal, and in fact, needing to do less inspections at some point. Has that been a conversation yet between your departments in terms of setting performance goals?
Councilmember Hiller, it actually has. I think we're going to have to kind of go this way a little bit before we can start going that way, but we have talked about that, and that's absolutely where we want to go.
Go ahead. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Seeing none. Thank you.
Mister Mayor, I'll ask Denise Vaughn, who is our deputy court administrator, to step forward, and she'll be standing in for Judge Guyer this evening.
Okay, thank you. Welcome.
Governing body, staff, good evening. I'm here to address the municipal court budget, which comprises the judicial side as well as probation. The judicial side covers the clerk's office, the protective services, and administration. And then we have our probation division, which also falls under the court. On the slide, on screen, we see that the court's FTEs have been static for years, so we don't see any projections in terms of increasing or decreasing those, hopefully. In terms of budget, we've pretty much stayed flat. The 1.5% I think is largely attributed to contractual increases for salaries. We have not increased any commodities or contractual obligations. As far as the key performance measures are concerned, in the environment that we work, it's our ability to be creative in preparing goals is largely restricted by state and local laws. I think Judge Guyer has done a great job, especially with the last two measures, to try to be creative as much as we can as a court. The first one, the first goal, there is quite germane to court processes in general. We are shooting to have a 95% achievement of all arraignments requested to be set within 45 days or more like. And that kind of ties back to the legal part of it. When we think about code filings, things of that nature, when we get a filing, we would like to see that case set within 45 days, and there are certain reasons for 45 days. Our standard is 30 days, but because of the mailing and the return mails and accounting for time, we have a 45-day standard for those filings. Well, if we have a large amount of filings, then we have docket space that's been used up, so again, it's our goal to make sure that we accommodate those as well as general cases, tickets that come in, e-tickets or handwritten tickets of that nature. In the past years, we've been able to achieve that at 100%, and we are committed to doing whatever it takes to make sure that those filings get taken care of, whether it be adding extra dockets or whatever we need to do to work with that. Second measure here is enrolling 18 defendants for the year 2018 in the alternative sentencing court. You'll see that in 2015, we enrolled 30, and that was the initiation of the program, and so there was a drive to begin and get things started. Along the way, collaborating with community partners, with the partners at the table, Valeo, VA, defense counsel, it was determined that the program wasn't necessarily best suited for developmentally disabled, and so the numbers kind of fell off because we, we didn't have the best tools to help them. Not to say that we just throw them out the door. We do have Valeo who have resources, and so they do refer them to those necessary resources, but as far as going through the program and enrolling, this doesn't work for those, for that demographic. Public engagement events, again, we'll see the numbers in '16 pretty high. Again, that was an initiation of the Clean Slate Day initiative, and so there was a lot of community outreach to just educate the public about the court in general functions. And to culminate those efforts, we have the Clean Slate Day in October of '16, the first one. We also had our most recent one last month, and so we've reduced the number of engagement events to one per quarter because we find that people are now more aware of those services. There are actually a lot of services we offer on a daily basis that someone could just walk in and get here, but there are additional services available with vendors and community resources and attorneys at that event, so they often choose to go there, and oftentimes too, or in the past, we've had donors who were able to help with fines, with fines. So, generally, you don't get that here, walking into the court, so people like to wait for that event and then go in and capitalize on that. On the next slide, we have our department highlights. Again, alternative sentencing court, we want to continue that venture. We find it's very beneficial. It helps to reduce our jail bill. We don't have recurring defendants being jailed when the need, the need is underlying. It's not just willful disobedience or to the law. Community engagement, we want to continue partnering with neighborhood relations, community outreach, to continue to educate the public and to hear from the public. A lot of times, again, we're restricted in what we can do legally, but it's good to know that there's an ear. I think most people, when they come in contact with the court, for the most intents and purposes, they want to resolve their cases as swiftly and as trouble-free as possible, and I think the more information they get, the more comfortable they feel coming to court, and the easier it is to get the case resolved from ticket to payment. Finally, implementation of e-filing. Most courts nationwide are going that route. We're going to begin exploring that this year. It's going to take a needs assessment, collaborating with the Kansas Bar, to see what their needs are. They would be the main users, as well as the public who file motions to continue, entry of appearances for attorneys, any other types of motions. And then it would be a synergy between our software and their needs and capabilities to get the best product, and we're hoping to go live with that in '18. With that, that ends my presentation.
Okay. Good. Other questions? Councilman Ortiz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was going to ask you about the electronic filing because it was mandated in February, so eventually, we're going to have to do that, and I was wondering, what do you look at or have you figured out what the cost will be?
I actually was just at the Kansas Criminal Justice Information Conference today, and our vendor is actually there, and we had some conversation about the programs. He wasn't able to give me figures, but I did find out that they do have a generic module for filing, and they, they do also work with other vendors to integrate into our system if need be, if the package they have does not suit our needs or the wider majority. So, to answer your question, no, there is no cost at this time. However, we do have the Court Technology Fund, which by, by city code allows us to update court technology, and within that, we have a contingency built in, if necessary, to pay for, things of that nature. I don't foresee it's going to be terribly expensive in terms of, when you're talking about interfaces. So, I think we'll be able to do it, but no, to answer your question, we don't have a set figure at this stage.
Okay. And if I may follow up, Nikki, can you, can you tell me how much is in their contingency fund?
Sure.
Because, because I, you know, we've been talking about e-filing for a long time. I, I work in the legal field, and they've talked about it, and they just made us do it in February, the state, so, the courts, so I look for, I look for it to come sooner than later, and that's, I just, I just want to make sure that we're able to cross that bridge when we get there.
Now, is that, is that e-filing of court filings, or are you referring to e-filing of court dispositions?
Court filings of everything. Oh, not the depositions, just the entry of appearances and, yeah, motions, and, yeah, you can't, you can't, you have to e-file.
Oh.
Yeah. And then it started February 1.
That's interesting, because I know there are a lot of other courts who were attending the day who don't yet.
They haven't got there yet.
Right. So, we're ahead of them.
We're ahead, yeah.
We're ahead of the.
I'm sorry, Nikki.
Oh, sorry. So, Councilwoman, I, we do have at the end of '16 in the Court Technology Fund, $228,000 as a cash balance, and that is certainly a fund that if, if and when we felt the need to use that, as long as it fell under the statute for allowable expenses, we could use that cash balance for something like that, so that might be something that we look at and make sure that we're on the up and up and using it on exactly what the legislature says we can use it on. But we do have some money built up in that fund.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Other questions? Councilman Jensen.
Thank you. Do you know what the docket capacity of the court is now? Are you guys at 25%, 30% capacity? How can we forecast as some of our caseload grows when we need to add more people?
It's hard to say. We do, it's all determined by who decides to show up. We can set the capacity and we fill it up with cases, but on the day, if not everyone shows up, then it's hard to gauge that we need to increase it or not, because it's so, it's so unpredictable. I think we do a good job now and have for a long time to watch, we do overbook at times based on the type of docket, because we know a lot of people are apt to not show up, either they forget their court date or whatever, so we keep an eye on that. But as far as being able to predict what to increase, we do have a few empty slots on Fridays, and so that's one of the things we're considering. If we needed to have an extra docket for extra cases, we can add a docket in on Fridays or two. And we do have clerks available to do, to do that. They do use Friday afternoons for desk work, which they love to have because court work is a lot of paperwork and a lot of processing, but they, they're great employees, and they don't complain, and they do their job, so whatever the court asks, that's what they do, so, and we're prepared to do that.
So, if we were to double the number of code compliance cases that were handed to the court, you all would be able to handle that easily?
I think the schedule, or the slide shown by Legos showed that it went up significantly from the very, was that from 15 to, it went up by 100 and plus, and we were able to handle that. We reallocate resources as needed.
Okay.
There are certain court processes that are not as urgent.
Sure.
They have to be done, but there are no, there's no timeline per se, and we prioritize based on that. I mean, sure, we'd love to have extra staff, but no, it's not feasible, and so we do what we can with what we have, and we've been doing very well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Hiller.
Along those same lines of your, and your 80% of arraignment scheduled, in the course of this year, I've been, we've had some conversations about problems with hold dogs, which are expensive and very hard on the dogs at Helping Hands. And it turned out that one of the reasons was continuances on the cases, and they were being set every 30 days because of the dockets. And there was some discussion about being able to work those in so that the reappearance could happen sooner and the adjudication could happen sooner for the dogs. Do you know if that has advanced yet?
I am not familiar with that discussion. I can tell you our standard with setting court dates, it's just a court standard, 30 days. When you come in and ask for a court date.
Right.
You get a court date 30 days out. And those continuances are often at the defendant's request. So as they request, now when it comes to requesting early releases, we set those for the next available hearing, which we have a motion hearing. That's considered a motion. We have a motion hearing once a week. So if you come in today for us to hear a motion for early release for your animal, you get set on the next docket regardless. So we try to get those animals released, but there are also city ordinances where they have to be held, danger, you know, bite to a human, that kind of thing, where we have no control over that. We have to wait for the court case to run its process.
Understood. It was that practice on the continuances, and there was some discussion that there could be some discretion. We had reduced the amount of hold time when we reset the animal control ordinance years ago to make sure that we could protect the owners and the animals.
Right.
And so just checking to see if that had been accommodated yet.
Not privy to that discussion, Councilwoman. Sorry about that.
Thank you. Other questions? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Let's Mr. Byander to come forward and give an overview of the planning department.
Sorry, missed that. Thank you. Good evening. Planning Department, we had, the first slide here shows probably one of the bigger changes you'll see. We welcomed Development Services and Richard Faulkner's team into our, into the fold this year. And so you'll see a major increase in our budget from the Development Services group, went up about $1.6 million, and then the FTEs up 18. A little change within the change there of that 18, we did add, two of those are new FTEs in Development Services. One of the things that I noticed when we got together here was looking at the numbers, the development activity was basically ramping up so that it's pre-recession levels, but we still have post-recession staff levels. So the review times, the communication, a lot of stuff had a tendency to maybe fall through cracks that it shouldn't. So having a full complement of staff and permit section was what we tried to do by adding plans examiner as well as a front counter permit intake person, which is actually a key to our customer service. So having those in place, we feel pretty good now about being able to communicate and reduce times as we move forward with permit reviews. This gives you a little snapshot of the broadness of our department, our key performance measures. The first one there is really measuring the effectiveness of our land use and growth management plan and our infill policies. We would expect that we should see more units, residential new units, in the city as a share of the entire three-mile area. That has happened over the last year. We project it to happen to go, continue to tick up, so that is a good sign. The second performance measures are sort of our commitment to protecting and surveying historic assets and neighborhoods. The numbers there are actually properties we have surveyed and protected. They're going down. That's okay. They're going down because we're just, this year and probably next year, we're doing smaller neighborhoods. So that's kind of, it's dependent on what neighborhoods we're doing. This year, we're doing surveying Country Club Edition, Collins Park, and Greater Auburndale section. Third measure there, safe and connected bikeways. That, of course, is definitely going in the right direction. We'll add 13 more miles this year and looking to add more in the next couple of years with a Phase 3 program for bikeways. And then lastly, another very important, kind of touched on it earlier, our approval of permit times. These are commercial permits. These are the new construction. We had 66 days for actual permit approvals. That's not the review times, that's actual approval. So that has a lot, there's a lot of different times built into that, back and forth with the applicant, other reviewing department agencies. But we think with the efficiencies we're creating and the staffing that we have, we'll be able to reduce that by 20% this year and another 20% next year. And then lastly, the department highlights for this year, actually for next year. Very excited about this first one in Development Services, our building permit portal and electronic plan reviews. Again, hit right at our communication issues and our timeliness issues. What this portal will do is users, the design professionals who apply for commercial permits, now will see the, in real time, they have real-time access to what we see in terms of permit comments and the status of the permit. They don't have to necessarily call and figure out what's going on. They can see it for themselves when they sign up. Complete Streets Manual is a continuation, is kind of the next step in our Complete Streets saga, implementing the policies, the bike plan, the PED plan. Now we're going to have a manual for when we redo streets, the types of streets we do, what elements of Complete Streets will be on them. Neighborhood Health Update, that's due next year. 2014 was the last time we updated that. And then on the heels of that, we would use that as a basis to expand or renew the Neighborhood Revitalization Program, which targets those intensive care and at-risk neighborhoods. So those are big tasks for next year. And then lastly, if that's not enough, we've added the light of updating our sign code to, and we added, why not, add building design standards while we're at it. We felt really good about what happened downtown. We would like to expand that citywide. Our sign code is so, in such a need of a comprehensive rewrite, and it's probably the last planning elephant in the room that we need to take care of. We just need to get at it. So that's my highlights, our department. So questions?
Are there questions? Councilwoman Claire?
Bill, can you explain the increase of 124%? Is that just for the two staff people?
No, no, no. No, that's the, that's 18 FTEs and all their costs that go with that division.
Then maybe, can you answer why Neighborhood Relations didn't go down 124%? Theirs went up like 118%.
Councilwoman Claire, actually Sasha and I were talking about that, comparing notes.
Theirs went down 18.
They have a much bigger budget. They have $7, $8 million, I think. Ours was 1.3. So it's just, from a percentage standpoint, it's the same raw numbers, but a percentage standpoint is going to look much different.
So math?
Yeah.
Okay. You got me there. So can you tell me again, I didn't catch the two positions you added?
Sure. They were both in Development Services. The first one was our front count, what I call the front counter person, the person you see when you walk into the department.
What is that called on here, do you know?
It's probably an office specialist.
Office specialist.
Thank you. Office specialist.
So you added one there, and then where was the other one?
Other one would be a plans examiner.
Plan reviewer?
Plan reviewer, yes.
One there. Okay. And, last question. You said you hope to, because I think 66 days for permits is crazy, but you said you hope to reduce it by 20% this year and 20% next year?
Yes.
Why can't you do 40% this year?
If we can do 20% this year, that's moving, that's some heavy lifting.
Well, but it's going to be 40% by 18.
So we don't, Councilwoman Claire, we don't have everything in place yet.
Okay. So you're still working on...
We have the staffing. Staffing is good, but we don't have the permit portal or electronic plan review capability yet. And that should be next, by next year, we should have those two things.
Okay. So you're still working on the process?
Yeah, so 40% is the goal over two years.
Okay. Thank you.
My question's very short and it ties right on that. What's your goal? What's an optimal turnaround in your world?
Good, good question. We control our initial review time, which is actually, our goal's 10 days for plan reviews. This number that I have on here is actually made up of all the different departments and the back and forth that goes with the applicant. So there's, this is not totally development service related. So we are trying to figure that out, to be quite honest. I'm trying to figure that out. What is, what should be, and by going down 20%, I think that's an achievable goal. And then we'll review if we didn't meet it, or if we did meet it, if we can get better. So it'll be a constant review of what is the goal. But I think after we implement these organizational changes, I think the 40% over two years is what I think would, it would settle that.
Most of us have probably gotten some pushback, and, you know, we certainly all know that your volume's been going up and so, but it would be nice to know what that, what the goal is when you do. I mean, knowing that it's 10 days for an initial plan review is just really helpful. Okay, you get it in, you're going to get something back within two weeks. That tells me more as a councilperson than 43 days. And then, you know, for us, maybe to have at some point a little more education about what that process is would be helpful too. But boy, the faster we can do it, we do hear about that. Thank you.
Sure.
Councilwoman Schwartz.
Thank you, Your Honor. Real quick, on the signs, Bill, when I first got on the council, we talked about redoing the codes for signs and everything, the flags and all that type of thing, the flag signs. But I'm really interested with tourism and the TGT Committee, where are we at with the wayfinding signs?
Oh, Councilwoman Schwartz, that was, that should be ready to go in 2018 as a project. That was part of the CIP.
Okay.
So we are on track to implement in 2018.
Right. Thank you.
Other questions? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, continuing on. We'll have Colonel Darren Scott step forward, and I believe Gretchen will be available to assist him as well.
Thank you, Your Honor. Elected body, city manager and staff. First of all, I'd like to say that interim chief Kramer would like to offer his apologies for not being here. He had a personal issue that he needed to take care of tonight, so he'd like to offer that to you. Thank you. One of the things we want to start off with is in the police budget, you'll notice that we have a 2% increase in the budgetary items. That's over the overall budget, but it's mostly housed in the wages and benefits area of the budget. We actually had a contractual decrease overall. It fluctuates from year to year depending on what we have to purchase and things like that, but it actually is down for this year. One of the things you'll also notice is that we have a negative 3 on our FTEs. We went from 353.5 to 350.5. And one of the things there is we actually reduced our cadet program by 3. The reason we did that is we're maintaining two of those cadets. The reason we did that is we're always reassessing and then looking at the analysis of our workforce. And one of the things that we've noticed is, this is, the cadet program at this time, we're having a lot of problems hiring people as it is, and what we need to do is reallocate resources to getting people in the door as quickly as possible. We've worked with human resources and different areas and legal to come up with some pretty innovative ideas. We've got a couple of proposals to the city manager, and one of them that we're implementing come July is the police recruit in training, where we can actually hire our potential candidates for academies that we have slated to start. And that way, we can get them on board early, and then we'll put them through different areas of the department, as well as teach them on the front end many things that we would put them through the academy. It doesn't cost anything. We're already budgeted for the FTE, and we're lucky, this is the first program that I know of its kind, I think even in the nation. And so we're really trying to push those issues, and that's where we're kind of coming up with some of that funding. So that negative 3 is up there. And the two that we have are cadets that are going to be applying and going through the process. One already has, and one will be going through the process as soon as they reach the age that they can do so. This is, the cadet program is a good program. It's, I think we're a little ahead of the time for it. Right now, it's not that we're knocking it completely out. We wanted to start off a little slower, get these people on and move forward. Additionally, the Explorer program, we already have, we have a lot of police officers that are raised through the Explorer program as well. So what there's next. One of the things we wanted to highlight is we're moving into the future with the department, and one of the places I've heard it bounced around all night tonight is the electronic age, the iCloud, the software, IT, and things like that. That is the future. From the time I started, when we just had old Dodges, diplomats out there and rusted wheels, to the time where we have Ford Explorers now, where we're running off the mobile data terminals in the cars. So one of the things we wanted to look at was how can we reach the community through media and that type of thing? So we went with social media as one of our projected targeted projects. In reality, we just, from the time we started Facebook, in the last year and a half, we went from around, when we first started, it was around 8, 7, 8,000 viewers. We're up to, actually, I just looked before coming up here, we're over 16,000. So we've already hit our projected rate for 2017. We set it at 18, but I think what we're really going to go for is hopefully 20,000 followers for, by the end of '27 into the first quarter of 2018. Twitter and social followers, you'll see we projected at 12,000. Our 2017 projected was 10,000. We just started that program, and that's been taking off. We also, if you sign up for Twitter, that's one of the things that we're using for the media, to get our information out to the media as well. One of the things I would like to say, we have about a 62% to 65% solve rate with our media. Just the other day, I was in the lobby, and I had a lady come in with her cellphone, with the guy's picture on it from a news release we did, but the guy that stole the bicycle out at the Walmart out on McVicker, and says, "This is the guy right here." And I said, "And they're coming to us and telling us who those are." So it's wonderful that we're utilizing that. Community warning, policing, problem-solving programs, those are like the stuff we're doing out in the magnet schools as badge buddies, Project Tabika working with them, Car Starter, Coffee with a Cop, Pizza with a Cop, Magnum and the TPD mascot. We actually started that program. We had to buy another one simply because it became so popular, we were overbooking them. The Cruiser Cab for DUI awareness, OK, Our Kids Program, which is Officer Tim Bell out into the Eisenhower. He now has almost, I think he has almost 60 young men who are following that program, and he has, I think, 27 mentors along now with that program. And then the Cadet Movie Project, which I think we are partnering up with the zoo this year as well, with the Cadet Movie Project, where we're actually taking the movie, we have the stuff to put on the movies, and we've been working with Fawn over at the, oh, Fawn Mosher, to do the movie nights. Some of our highlights. Oh, I got it. Yep. Doing 75%. That's all right. Reduce crime and create safer neighborhoods, improve quality of life in this community for the citizens that we live, work, and play in our capital city. Release 100 public announcement utilizing social media, keeping our community up to date with press releases, live video feeds and videos. We actually created, in our department now, we have a studio that we put together with the help of Lieutenant Stewart and Amy McCarter behind me. So we can actually do live feeds now. We can actually do our own news. We can actually put out our own stuff, and that's where we're moving to as well. Includes tips for reducing crime, updates on current events related to the department. If you follow our Facebook, we just put out a safety tip of leaving kids in hot cars. We not only did it with the English translation, but we actually did it with one of our Spanish-speaking sergeants, Manny Menos, and it was, it's really taken off as well, and we're going to do more of that as we move forward so we can reach out more to our community. Concentrate on recruiting for the next generation, TPD guardians. One of the things across the nation we found is we've had a heck of a time with that. All law enforcement agencies are having that issue, and we are trying to push more resources into recruiting. For instance, we had a recruiting fair at Washburn University. There were people from Dallas, Texas up here recruiting for our, the same recruits that we need to recruit for. So those are some things that we're really going to be pushing out into the community and with Vidal Campos, who's our recruiting officer, and our recruiting team. With that, I will certainly open to questions.
Questions? Questions? Councilwoman Ortiz?
I don't have a question, I have a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
City manager, Mr. Scott, I'm sorry, Chief Scott? I always get the, Darren, Colonel's...
Darren's fine.
Darren, Darren talked about a movie night, and I believe there's a date... Darren, Darren talked about a movie night, and I believe there's a date. And I believe that we have NIA's that send out thousands, thousands of flyers to homes. So if we could have our neighborhood and development, I always want to call it the other program. If we can have them give those to the NIA presidents to put those in the newsletters, that would be great, because they need a month, and I know the date is July 27.
27. We'll confirm.
It's free, and it's a safety issue, and I appreciate Darren that you getting on this, because Zookeeper would not do the job. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman.
Councilmember Claire.
Now, Councilmember, you said you'd be nice.
I said, I got it all yellowed up. Have you changed the process of hiring? I know your length of hiring is like six months to a year. Have you changed that process so you don't lose candidates by the time you get finished with the process?
The process is really set forth to vet a candidate for entering into our hirement. One of the things that we're doing is, is we have looked at the process, and from the Civil Service Board, back to the beginning of bringing somebody in. We used to, years ago, actually do a lot of the investigations, if you will, the background checks, in-house. We moved away from that over the years to hiring specific investigators to do those investigations. One of the things that we noticed, and I know that Chief Kramer noticed, as well as I've noticed, we did those backgrounds when we were on the, when we were motorcycles and different areas, so have a lot of other people. And the quality of those investigations were really good. It is an added duty, so our only issue is, is can we take people off the streets to do that for that moment of time? We do have resources to do that at certain times of the year, like, for instance, the school resource officers. Well, as we pull them in, they're doing summer camps right now, but we can take them in between, do background investigations, which they will be assigned, especially for the next academy. So that's one of the things that we can do to start speeding that up. We've gotten away from that for over a number of years, but it was a viable resource many years ago, so it doesn't mean that it was archaic. It just means we need to reinstitute it and line it out better. One of the other things we do is, one of our records people does a lot of backgrounds for our licensing. And when we have civilian employees, instead of assigning them to investigator, we can actually put them with Andrew, and he can do a lot of those background checks and get them up to speed quicker. We have to vet everybody that comes in because of the Kansas Criminal Justice Information System. We have to make sure everybody's covered, make sure there's no felony records all the way, no matter where they're at, from the United States, or where they're coming in, even from people who are here on work visas and things like that. So we just have to make sure that everything's vetted. And it does take a lot of time to do so, including interviews, interviewing all the references and things like that. But we are working on shortening the process the best that we can, but still maintaining the quality of product.
Because I know we lose a lot of people like that.
One of the, may I answer this?
Yeah. Let's keep it concise, because, you know.
Sure. One of the reasons we do lose people is because we have a neighbor who, another department who snags them up, if you will. They come in, offer them a job. They'll go out and put in applications to different departments. They can offer the job quicker, send them down to KLETIC. This is one of the programs that we're gonna do, so we can lock them into a job and then put them into the academy. That's one of the things that we've been missing, but the city manager has been gracious to allow those funds to be used for that.
Okay. And I asked in April, I think, for a report of held calls, and I still have not got that report, because I want to know how many calls we're holding. If I can get that, that would help with my next question of, how many officers on the street are we down? Do you know? Are we, I kind of tried to figure it up over here, but I wasn't able to.
I can tell you, currently, we are 17 officers short from our total complement of 295, and we're seven civilian positions down.
So are we looking to build that up in 18, 17?
We're actually looking at a start date of an academy in September 1, or in September, October 1, I believe is the date. That's something else that we've done, working with city manager. One of the things we haven't been able to do is have a start dates on academies. That has been a real problem, a target start date. With the city manager's permission, we have been able to set up a October 1 start date, and then an April start date, so that we can work towards those, and we can tell our candidates, hey, we are having an academy at this time. So that's one of the things we have also accomplished this year, working to better manage our losses in personnel.
So do you think we're gonna be able to get up? What I hear, I don't know how many times I've done the budget, 2, 3, I always hear, you know, the academies dates, we won't get up to our 17 down, because we're always in the, it doesn't hit the right time to be able to get, I don't want that. I want our 17 down to be up.
I'm, we.
And I know you do, too.
We do, too, ma'am.
So how are you gonna do that?
I think the biggest thing that we can do is, we have the recruit training position that now we can lock our good candidates in, we can hire them in. We'll have a rotating basis around the department. Second thing is setting up permanent or target dates that we can say, this is when we're starting the academy, just like you said. And October 1 is our academy for this fall, and then April, we will set another date for the spring academy. To be consistent, so they know that they are gonna have an academy. Because in the past, we have actually yanked an academy right before we started it. And that doesn't put a good message out there. And working with the city manager, he's fully behind us moving into that, those permanent dates, so that we can set that out there and say, this is when we're gonna bring you in. But we can also bring them in 90 days ahead of time through the recruit officer position.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor and Councilwoman, thank you.
Just very briefly, I'd reiterate what the Colonel said. I think these two initiatives, we're trying them, but we think they're going to pay dividends. But I want to make sure, in the spirit of full disclosure, there's always going to be vacancies, the ebb and flow of just the way personnel works across every department. So we're never going to be able to take a snapshot in time where a department is quote-unquote fully staffed.
But this is not just a department. This is safety.
Okay. We're not going to be able to sit here or stand here and tell you that they will always be at their number, because there's just routine retirements, random retirements, and we have a process that takes time. We can do things to improve it, but I think, I don't want you to come away with the impression that they're going to be at that magic number all of the time.
But we've never been at that magic number since I've been on. So how close are we going to get? I mean, if we're 17 down now, are we gonna be, I don't mind 2 down. 17's a lot. I think last year, I don't know what last year, how many we were down.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I'll sound like a broken record. These programs, when we bring the recruits on early, I think are going to pay dividends for us. And folks knowing that we have these routine start dates, we can't have an academy every month. So we have to pick some times to make it work. We think the spring and the fall will work. No guarantees, but I think we're all optimistic that it's gonna make us more fully staffed most of the time. Couple qualifiers.
Yeah. I heard you. Do you know, Colonel, if Topeka Public School, not Topeka Public School, if our, whoever the cars, they had their rotten cars, you remember?
Yes, the school resource officer.
Yeah, the school resource officer. Did they have decent cars now?
What we're doing, we just brought in our new fleet for what we were allocated for this year. They are hitting the streets now. What we'll do is a trickle-down, so that we will pull the best cars out of the fleet, from the main fleet, and then give those to the, and get rid of the old cars. The SROs are on the line for those, some of those cars, absolutely they are.
Is that yes?
It's just a matter of attrition, how we get through. We gotta keep our fleet at 222 cars, so. It's just a matter of attrition and putting them in.
I guess I wondered if in your budget, are you painting any cars? Are they, do they need painted for the school resource officers? Or, I want decent cars to the officer. If we have to paint them, then we need to paint them.
Well, since you brought that up, our current process is looking at all our school resource, and where we're gonna put all our vehicles, so they have those vehicles that you're looking to represent us out there with.
Okay. Good. Okay. Another question. Now, I may be wrong on this. When you do a bust or you get money, we get to keep a percentage of that, correct?
You'd be referring to an asset forfeiture.
Okay. Is that true?
That is true. Depending on where the money comes from, if it's narcotics, and we pull the assets from that arrest, yes, we do. It depends on the partnership that we work that call with. If it's with us, it's with us, but a state split would be like the district attorney's office and us, or if it's the federal, it's the federal people that we are partnering with.
Is that in your budget? Where does that money go?
It goes into the special law enforcement fund.
And where's that?
The asset forfeiture fund.
You want to finance, you want to, or?
Please. Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman, it's not in the general fund budget, and these line items that you're looking at are expenditures, so it wouldn't be reflected there in any case. But it is in, as the Colonel said, it's in the special law enforcement budget.
Which is a different fund.
Which is a completely different fund, page 135.
Yeah. So I guess if their variance is $1 million, they want $1 million more dollars in their proposed 18 budget, does any of that, none of that is picked up from the special fund?
Councilwoman, there are specific guidelines on the way those monies can be spent, and typically, personnel is not one of those, and operations.
And so none of this other stuff is either?
Yes. It's typically reserved for equipment and capital purchases and the like.
I'm saying, yes, there is very specific guidelines that go on. One of the things we can't use is to supplant a budget. So if we can budget for an item, we can't use those funds if it's in the budgeted, already the budget that we have. And the other thing is the salaries, we can't use it. We can only use it for one-time purchases, or something, equipment, we can't continue to use it for that. There's real specific guidelines on what we can and cannot use it for.
So it's not gonna help your budget at all here?
No, no, ma'am.
And the, there's $71,000 increase on your allowable and reimbursements.
Saying, pardon me again?
There's $71,000 increase on your allowable and reimbursements. Do you know why that would be?
So on 1101 and 1014?
It's the 51101?
Yes, ma'am. And on line 1014, you'll see a decrease of 66, 9, 55, 20, and right below it?
Yes.
You'll see 1101 allowance reimbursement, so it's a shift from that account up to advanced education compensation budget was moved from 5104, 14 to 51, 101.
Okay. And your data processing went up 22,800 IT?
Yes. That's IT fees increased due to actuals for PD higher than budgeted. Adjusting requirements for special funds have been overpaying in previous years. Overall, IT only increased by a recommended amount for the salary increases on that one. It's 22, because of the, is that that systems analyst there, too?
Councilwoman, we continue to try to make sure IP, IT fees are distributed equitably across our departments, and so this reflects the actual usage by departments. So that's why the PDs went up.
So that's their actual usage?
And, yeah, the projected based on what the actual's been.
Okay. That's it.
Any other questions for the police?
Just one, and it would be in terms of where we're going with reporting. A lot of this, I know we've been doing some great stuff through communications, as well as through the police department, to get public information, and you all are very popular, so the fact that lots of people are looking at your social media doesn't surprise me. I see that. But, you know, we're doing that in order to reduce crime, like, we're wanting to educate people about lock it, remove it, or lose it, in order for our thefts from automobiles to go down, and so on, some of the examples that you gave as well. Has there been discussion yet about these performance metrics actually showing, tying that preventive education and initiatives in the community to reductions?
It's kind of early to say, but we're down for the year, and we're going into June, almost the second week, we're down 233 property crimes, which is actually, has not been heard of for many years. And that would, I would say that would tend to say something about who the people, the people that we're reaching, and who's helping us, and the crimes that we're solving. We're making a lot more arrests this year than we did in the last years. One of the things that we always look at every year as we do all the analysts, you know, how the crime trends, but crime is cyclical. I've been doing this my 29th year here, and I've seen it go up, down, up, down, up, down. But we try to pour water where it's hot, and where there's embers, and we try to put that out. The auto theft initiative was a great initiative, and it yielded a lot of arrests, and that was part of that, too.
Some are easier to follow than others, I know, but for instance, when we've seen Nextdoor isn't listed on your, particularly on your list here, but when we get those results, that whatever it is, like 84% of the people whose pictures go out on Nextdoor get picked up, and it's because citizens are turning them in. And to me, those would be the kind of performance numbers as this all matures and so.
And we do keep track of those ones that come in from those bulletins that we put out. And yes, we do utilize Nextdoor, because we are a Nextdoor city, and those go out also as well on the safety side of that.
Okay. Please, the questions.
One more. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, it's past.
No, on the clock. Just one more, real quick one. The dog, I saw that the licensing, when I applied for my dog's license, I had to send it to like Texas or something. We contract that out now?
Yes, ma'am. We had an issue that was brought for us to go through the internet, so that people could stay at home and do their pet licensing from there. When we did the research and the bid process, Pet Data was the one that came in for that. Pet Data is out of Texas. So they, all the transactions run through there, but we still use, Tracy is our ACO, our animal control person in records, and she monitors all that. And they also give our quarterly reports, and yearly reports, and year-end reports call come back to us, that we do here, so that Gretchen can monitor all the fees and things that come in, the late fees and things of that nature. That is, yes, the companies that came out, there was one in Washington, I believe, one in Texas, and one in Oregon.
But is that costing us more to do it that way? Weren't we doing it in-house?
We were doing it in-house, yes, ma'am.
So is this saving us money or costing us money?
Technically, it's costing money, because Tracy's able to work on other things, so.
So the correct answer would be, technically, we do run in the red on the, so we do run in the negative. However, it does free up Tracy to do work on other things within the records department, which helps out, because we're like, I said, we're seven civilian positions down, so she can pick up a lot of those, some of those duties as well. So it does help us in the long run. We are up to 65% usage, and we're shooting for 75% on that, and it increases every year. It's just a convenience for the public, so they can get their pets registered, and we want to promote a healthy pet population out there, the best we can is to get them licensed, know where they're at, and make sure they're up on their shots.
Okay.
Thanks.
I think we're going to, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I think we're gonna declare this section over, and will, the remaining ones, we will work into at one of our other meetings. I'm sorry that you all didn't, you came tonight and sat for two hours, and we didn't get to everyone, but I think we're gonna be losing councilmembers if we continue any longer. So we go to the next item, a business is.
Awkward.
We just, okay, let's, we have about a few more items to take care of. Next item is announcements. We have the preliminary agenda for next week.
June 13 agenda includes, on the consent agenda, it looks like we have two noise exceptions and expenditure ordinance. For action items, we have a public hearing and ordinance on healthcare improvement revenue bonds for Brewster Place. Public hearing and ordinance for property located at Southwest Western Avenue for vacation. We have 2018 transit guest tax allocations, and 2018 social services and contracted services grant allocations. That's it.
Okay. Other announcements, Mr. Mayor, City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'll be brief. You've seen the email and the press release, but it's worth saying it again. City of Topeka just received a $300,000 grant from the EPA. Credit goes to a lot of folks, certainly, but it's very exciting, perhaps the largest grant award we've ever received.
but it's very exciting, perhaps the largest grant award we've ever received, so that's really amazing news, and it will allow us to take a good step in the process of the river revitalization, and certainly we would have high hopes that if EPA is willing to fund an assessment and an evaluation, that they would then take the next step with us and do some funding for some other opportunities. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Yes, two quick announcements I have, first, council members, you receive this item here about Refuel Topeka, this is the, another $10,000, no, $35,000 grant we received to provide to support the youth free meals, and the interesting thing about this is, there's plenty of food and meals out there, the problem is, not enough young people are taking care of it, the families do not come in, so we're putting a great deal of our funds into marketing it, and we're working with a lot of the community areas, and you can see there in all parts of the city, I think there's one in every council district, there's young people who go without enough food in all areas of the city, so we want to work and communicate, the bus system provides free transportation, so we want to do all we can to get this out, and on here, it says the dates and the times, some of them have breakfast as well as lunches, so this is a tremendous service, and it's, we're using the money very appropriately. The other item is a good news, a week ago on May 28, Sunday, May 28, the New York Times had a story on police embrace body cameras to show valor, started right here, and then on the inside, it's a major story about four places in the country where police cameras have captured significant incidents, and probably the most featured is Topeka, and Officer Bulmer, and it has pictures in here, and one was in Albuquerque where an officer filmed his finding a toddler and carrying it in, and this shows the pictures of Officer Bulmer. So, I think it's a great, I've had three different places in the country where people emailed in congratulating Topeka for what they're doing, so sometimes there's good news, and we celebrate that. Okay, we go to Councilwoman Schwartz.
Thank you, I'll put my health hat on, and thank you for getting done at 9:00, I have a 7 o'clock health access meeting in the morning.
I have a 7 o'clock.
You have a 7 o'clock too, so, I want to thank all the staff that come to this, I know they put in 12 to 14 hour days today, so, thank you everybody for that. If you haven't had a chance to open your packet and see the Shawnee County Community Food System Assessment, there is a lot of information in there about our health, the health of our community, and they're recommending that we have a food informed council, and I think that that can be beyond the county doing that, that the city should also be involved, it talks about food deserts and everything. And then, so, the last part of my health thing is, drink to your health, and go to Brew at the Zoo this weekend, from 5:00 to 6:00 PM, at the zoo, so, you can still get your tickets.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor, but don't drive afterwards.
Right.
Topeka Gives was today, and if you weren't there, you missed it, thanks.
Councilwoman Hiller.
Topeka Gives was awesome, I saw Councilman Henderson.
Nobody knows my name.
And Commissioner Buehler, so it sounds like a number of us were out, you know, doing the best that we could. I have some, with the refuel, I have a number of meal sites that I'm aware of in District 1 that are not on that list, and so, if that is a progressive project, I would, I would love to have that list that has absolutely every meal site in town on it, because it would help me, I know, to make sure I'm referring people in, so, thanks for our leadership on that, but I was at one of those places today. Everybody knows things rock this weekend, so hopefully everybody was out to two or three events, the Sunflower Music Festival starts Friday night here in Topeka as well, and runs for nine straight nights, including a jazz night, it's free, the wonderful opportunity to enjoy music and contribute if you want to, and certainly to bring children and family members, to introduce them to chamber orchestra and chamber music. Councilwoman Ortiz and I have gotten ourselves on mailing lists for people, because we are interested in train service, and we got an alert today, or this week, that Amtrak and Burlington Northern Santa Fe are partnering, and there will be an inspection train running from Oklahoma City and stopping at every stop along the way to Newton, which is where a future Heartland Flyer train would intersect with our, with our regular train service, and so if anybody wants to, it's kind of last minute, they're going to start at Oklahoma City early Friday morning, and end up coming through Topeka at 3:45, but it would be, they're going to stop at every station along the way, to see kind of what, what condition they're in. People have been working on this for years, and at one point, there was service from Oklahoma City to Kansas City, but that would, it would include Topeka, and it would be really exciting, so the fact that the inspection train is occurring is a really, is a really big step, so, just wanted to share that with everybody. I have more information if anybody wants to.
Councilwoman Claire.
Okay, they're back, their Concerts in the Park series at Garfield Park Gazebro, June 19 is a patriotic concert from the 35th Infantry Division Army Band, and then we have June 26, and then it'll be the North Topeka Community Band, and July 10, the North Topeka Community Band, at 7:30.
Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Karen, I hope you would forward that to everybody, so they could go down to the train station and get on board. The Heartland Flyer, we've been fighting that, not only financially, but locally, and all the way down to Texas, how neat would that be to take the train all the way down to Texas? One of the most valuable tools that we don't use, excuse me, as council members, or as the city of Topeka, is our NIA newsletters, our NA newsletters, and again, city manager, I'd like to see this go into the newsletters of all the NAS and NIAs. It's free, it goes out once a month, and it goes to the homes of the low to moderate income, where there are children, Mr. Mayor, at home alone. I will take this to DCF and add it to one of my minis, and I also wanted to, I didn't see it on here, but, there's a group of people, and the address is 501 Jackson, and they call it Super Sunday, and they're called the Brown Silverbacks, they serve Sunday dinner, every Sunday, and it doesn't matter how much money you make, they just serve dinner at 11, 11 or 11:30, and it's at 501 Jackson, and when I, they're serving about 300 to 350 people, and it's a group, I know these young women, and it's a group that they, and when I say they're serving, they're serving like your grandma would serve, or the meatloafs, or the turkeys, or whatever, but I don't see that on the list, but, you know, we're very proud to have these sites, and to have these sites available, not only to families, but to the children, so, if we can, if we can, I will pass these out, I'll make it a, make sure that I make sure that those get out, and I challenge all my council members to pass out all the cards, but if we can get these in the newsletters, they go to every door all over the city, and I think that would be great, because that's how we're going to get the word out. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman, members.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, a couple compliments, I wanted to, I was at the Hawnin Park NIA meeting, Hawnin Acres NIA meeting last night, and they were very, they're very happy with the fire department response, a few weeks ago, there was a fire Colonial Park Apartments, and they was tripping over themselves, saying how nice a job the fire department responded very quickly, I believe helped a gentleman exit his apartment, and kept it contained, so, nice job to the fire department. Also wanted to thank WPC, I participated with the Apostolic Church of Jesus Christ on Sunday, or Saturday afternoon after our budget meeting, to clean up some stuff, and we stumbled on a inlet that had been buried under leaves and stuff for maybe several years, I put it on See Click Fix, and I don't have like a one that says Tony Emerson, City Council, it's just regular, well, it does have my email address, but, anyway, maybe they'd tell them that, but anyway. Yes, yes, they know. But they came out, I put that on Saturday, today they came out and cleaned out both those inlets, inlets that hadn't been working maybe for years, so, I, great job, WPC, and use See Click Fix, it really works. Then, real quick, I want to congratulate the Shawnee Heights Girl Softball Team, they won the 5A State Softball Tournament, and some of those same girls had won also the volleyball tournament, were also on the volleyball team, so fantastic group of athletes this year at Shawnee Heights, and on a personal note, my nephew Cole was named the co-city player of the year for baseball this year, so, congratulations, Cole, thank you.
Rock on him.
Yes, yeah, that's Cole Emerson.
Councilwoman DeRispa.
I just have a quick thank you, I just received a wonderful note from the Topeka West third period government class, I had a chance to talk to them about city council, and, you know, city engagement, and I got a thank you note from them, so thank you guys.
Councilman Jensen.
That's awesome. I too got the email about the train, and having ridden Amtrak to California and back several times, the Southwest Chief, it's very exciting, so, if you've never been on an Amtrak train, I'm assuming they'll bring one of them through that actually has the cars and things you can look around there, it's such an elegant way to travel, so I will see you there. Thursday evening is Cornerstone's annual Housewarming fundraiser, you know, we have talked an awful lot recently about the need to take another look at affordable housing, and these guys are on the cutting edge of that. It's a fundraiser, they're a very small organization, there's a huge amount of goods, so, I would encourage you to swing by and check that out, it's 5:30 at Heritage Hall at the Expo Center. They'll have all their staff there, so if you have questions about affordable housing, this is also a great educational opportunity for you all. Thank you, everybody, have a nice week.
There being no further business, we are adjourned.